The order, roll call please.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Here.
Lurik?
Here.
Dukenia?
Here.
Toman?
Here.
Gail?
Here.
Guzekowski?
Here.
Sorry about that. Pledge of allegiance.
Here.
Seeing as the fire department made accreditation, Tom would you lead us?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First on the agenda, we have a recognition award, but I'd like to hold that for later until our Eagle Scout can make it here. He has a prior commitment to the football team, so he'll be in in a little bit and...oh, sorry. The approval of minutes, please, take a look at the minutes.
Guzekowski will make a motion to approve minutes of 7:31:17.
Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lurik?
Aye.
Dukenia?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Ellstein.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Great, thank you. As I was saying, item number four, we will wait until Ben is with us to give him that proclamation. Has everybody signed, Catherine?
Yes.
Is there a housekeeping order?
Yes, we have everyone.
Okay, great. Moving on, informational, fire department for accreditation. I will turn that over to the chief.
That's on now, how's that? Pushed the wrong button. That's what happens when you get accredited, you forget things. First off, thanks to the council, five years ago, most of you were here in present that approved us on this accreditation process. As I look back and Mike, who was my accreditation manager, it wasn't a straight path along the way. We had just finished up the summer with the Seek Temple event, and as we moved into this and Mike and I were discussing of the accreditation process, we knew from our neighbors to the northwest there, West Dallas, who was accredited, this wasn't an easy task to proceed. We decided to take a look at it, we got into it, but along the way, a few things gotten away. I wouldn't say gotten away, but we couldn't give 100% attention to accreditation process because budget issues, Act 10, the city must move forward on the city hall and the fire station, the construction boom started where Mike spends a lot of time doing that, we had a power plant explosion, a few other things that transpired. And along the way, one of the things behind me, Mike Havy, who's now assistant chief, in the middle of the architectural process for the fire station, Rodney Palmer left, Mike stepped into that as my sidekick on the whole process, and then we lost Joe Pulvermacher, the chief in Fitchburg, and then Mike again steps up and now he's assistant chief of training, doing a hell of a job, and again, he ended up with a lot of paperwork he didn't expect, plus, in the middle, you see, he's doing his bachelor's degree at the time. So, you know, hats off to all of these people that stepped up in this accreditation process. And again, I want to thank also the networking that goes on. Last week, we were just down in Rockford, and one of the gentlemen down there, Mark Pugnitis from Naperville, they just got accredited for the fifth time, and he's been one of our strong mentors and supporters of this process, along with West Dallas, Tulsa, North Shore, and the other agencies around the state. So we have what they call a Great Lakes user group that we meet once a month, once in Wisconsin, once in Illinois, and we also discuss Bears, Cubs, White Sox, and everything else in between, but a lot of it gets done on this whole networking process. I'm going to kind of turn it over to Mike on some of the ins and outs of this process, but as I sent the emails to you and forward, we'd like to get together with each one of you and discuss it in further detail, because the five years of work, there's some documents that are unprecedented that we had to do and that will, I think, take us very far and aligns with the city's strategic plan. Working on the budget process now in the new format that we have, I think we fit right into it. So I'm going to give Michael a chance, because he ate lunch at his desk a lot of weeks and months. I think you're still eating at your desk, because every year, we have what's going to be called an ACR, and that's every year, we have to submit paperworks and updates because of our recommendations to the body of the international.
So I'll be brief in the comments and just kind of cover the highlights, and I guess it'd be more prudent to ask if there are any questions related to the process and maybe how it affects the city moving forward. The accreditation model is a model of continuous improvement that we embarked on to improve the service that we ultimately deliver to the community, to the city of Oak Creek. There's key documents that are associated with this. It's self-assessment. As part of that self-assessment, you create a community risk assessment standards, a cover doc, which assesses your community and your responses within that community, a self-assessment manual, which looks at 258 performance indicators through 10 categories that evaluates your performance as an organization against industry best practices and standards. And finally, as the chief said, there is the strategic plan, an essential document not only for the city, but for each department, for the fire departments also. Upon completion of those documents and that self-assessment, you receive a peer team visit, where they evaluate your documents, they open the coverage in your department, they look at the inner workings, and determine how you measure up. Are you a credible organization? Are you doing what you say you do? We successfully completed that peer team visit, and were given the opportunity to go in front of the commission in Charlotte, where we are subsequently accredited. It's a step in the process, it's quite an achievement, but it is one step in the continuous improvement process. The key element that occurred as part of all of this were the recommendations given to us by the peer team. Those recommendations form our work plan, a portion of our work plan for the department over the course of the next five years. We received 27 recommendations from that peer team, 15 strategic, which are higher level recommendations, and 12 specific. We've currently begun work on those recommendations. I'm glad to say that a majority of the strategic ones are in progress. It forms the basis for us improving over the next five years. That's not to say the other areas, the other 220 performance indicators are good for us. Each of those evaluations of those performance indicators included a plan for improvements into the future. So not only are we working on the recommendations delivered by the peer team, but we're also working on our improvement plans for the other performance indicators. That's a summary of the accreditation process and the model that we've bought into, so I guess it would be prudent to ask if there's any questions related to it at this time.
And also during the process, when we were at the hearing, they taped it. We haven't gotten it yet ourselves, but you'll be able to see and we'll pass that on. But I want to point out one of the questions. First off, the panel was 11 different people from different parts of walks of life, the ICMA, the Department of Defense, labor was there, fire chiefs from various size of cities all the way up to the million people down to the 25,000. So there was a good cross-section that looks at all your work, they read the recommendations, because I was surprised at some of the questions they did ask, but I thought it was interesting that the fire chief from Camp Pendleton Marine Base, who is the vice president of the organization, after we got discussing what was going on with our accreditation process, he didn't realize on how we were, we had one hand tied behind our back in the area of finance. So I think that bodes well for what we've been doing for the last five or six years of the struggles, we had to try to make do what we have and try to grow in the right
Steve?
Chiefs, all three. As you go through, as you went through the accreditation process and you completed the tasks and it either, you passed or you didn't pass, and then you had to work on them in order to pass, did any of them come up with a better way of doing things? Say you did one thing one way, but then the accreditation process says, well, industry standards think maybe you could do better if you did it this way?
Well, I can give you a prime example of kind of one of my recommendations at the top is, we should be evaluating all our MOUs, all our mutual aid agreements on an annual basis. I mean, and we started looking for, you know, you start looking at the list, and I threw the paper at Mike, I says, this is just a draft, and all of a sudden, there's three more that I think of, and it's like, pretty soon, we had 10 or 15. In fact, I have an MOU tonight on the next part of the agenda that we have to, you know, review. It's, I guess it's more of the detail work that...they were really impressed with our department, Steve, and one of the things they did say was, we don't speak good enough about ourselves, but in the same breath, too, there says, well, there's room for improvements, because you're doing it, but you're not writing it down. So that's kind of one of the keys to it. So if you talk about improvement, it's, the fire service, we know we're not, we're not good as the police are in writing reports. We have no denying that. We're at the low end of the spectrum, but, you know, when we're talking action items out in the field or things that we do, yeah, you know, there are things, but I think Mike might have a couple more, too.
So just about every performance indicator has an area of improvement for our organization to some degree. As the chief said, we do things, some things very well in the city of Oak Creek, some of our personnel areas, some of our health and wellness areas are very strong, our responses and the tracking of the data with it is also very strong. Being a continuous improvement model, the trick with that is, as you evaluate those performance indicators, you don't want to settle, but rather find where those improvements might lie.
Any operational changes to how you respond to incidents, for example?
Well, I got to, after the word, the president came and talked to me, and he did say, because we had a lot of discussion about mutual aid and how we rely upon it, and he says, remember, there is, it gets to the point where you still have to take care of your own city, because maybe someday, that mutual aid may not be able to respond to you. And I says, yeah, that's probably one of the toughest questions we have in front of us today, and there's no easy answer to that question, because we have fiscal restraints, and we'll, you know, we're continuing to work on it, that's all we can do. Operational wise, nothing real drastic, Steve, that you can think of, Mike. I don't have anything that was really that, you know, if you talk about an operational thing as a city-wise, while our purchasing policy hasn't been updated since 1991, and they were quick to point that out, so that seemed to, her name was Anastasia from Ontario, Canada, was one of our peer assessors, and she gave through the financial side of things. So she gave us some input on the financial side.
Thank you. All she got.
Boy, and, well, one more, and you talked about it, and Chris, you'd like this, one of the commissioners did ask, when you going to build your four stations? So I says, that's way out there, but we are keeping the data on it, and right now, we can't recommend it, so we understand that.
Would you like to speak? Arden, you had two down, you had number 11, and what was the second?
Yeah, Arden Degner, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. I am curious how an international organization could rate our fire department on inspection and to the codes that are required in these multiple inspections on the buildings and premises of the city of Oak Creek. How can an international organization approve something that is statewide, in many cases only?
We'll have the department answer that, having, them having gone through the process.
That's a fantastic question. My area is community risk reduction, which is our fire prevention and inspection program, and that is Program 5A that does get evaluated. Every state is different. Every municipality has variances and local code variances within their statutes. What the accreditation model does is, it looks at, how are you adhering to your state and local codes? Is there a process for updating them? The process to monitor the changes associated with that? Are you performing your plan reviews and inspections in accordance with those codes? So the international model does account for the variances that are prevalent out there, but it makes you, it makes the individual department come up with solutions for adhering to those local codes, monitoring changes with them, and ensuring that they're being applied appropriately.
Yeah. Sig, would you like to speak?
Good evening, good to see you all. My name is Sig Tomkowski, and I live at 210 West Oak Leaf Drive in near Oak Creek. I've had experience in healthcare accreditation in the past, which is a very static process. You take numbers and you look and compare, and that's about as far as you get to it. This whole approach, which I did explore a little bit with the department, is a very comprehensive and systematic approach in looking at this. It just doesn't look at numbers against numbers. The other thing is that it also includes your self-assessment, which is unique. And so you look at yourself, and then you can better represent, but this one here is you, this approach is very unique in that it's focusing on the future, not today, not what we did in the last two or three years against something else, but what we want to do in the future. So there, and it comes down to many positive incomes. It's a very sophisticated strategic planning initiative, too. The byproduct is developing a very systematic and relevant strategic plan. I think we're all privileged to recognize this work on the part of the department, which has adapted over the years to many changing issues and functions and processes. The department, and I was involved, I was a fireman many years ago, it's a whole different ballgame nowadays, it's not, and you can just look at the ratios of EMS and advanced, you know, emergency care and, you know, the fire service, but also all the things that they do internally that we have no idea about. If you were to visit and look at what goes on with the technology that they're using, it's very sophisticated today. The only other thought I had was, I hope there was a way, a good way, to share this achievement with the community, not just to say we're accredited, that could have many misconceptions. That's, you know, that's fine, but they've done a good job, they've performed very well. It's not like they were behind anything, but in a positive way to show the community that this safety service has reached a new plateau and is looking at the future and, you know, changing and adapting as time goes on. I didn't mean to get out to a speech, but this is, this is a lot different than when I was involved in years ago in accreditation, where you worried about what you're going to get nailed on. So, okay, well, thank you for letting me speak a few minutes.
Steve?
Just final comment, chief, don't sell yourself short on your reports. As a retired law enforcement officer, it takes a, may take a brave individual to stand there at a door with a ballistic vest and a shotgun and go through a door at a drug house, but I'm telling you, it takes a special individual to walk up to a burning house and voluntarily walk into it. So, and I admire the fire department for that.
Thank you. Ken?
Thanks, Mayor. Tom, Mike, kudos to, you know, you and your staff. I mean, you guys set a pretty lofty goal those five years ago. I mean, you said something out there and you persevered through, you know, you mentioned all the staff changes, the events that you guys witnessed, so that really is a testament to your leadership, so congratulations on your accomplishment.
Thank you. Chris?
I was just going to mention, you know, with continuous improvement, there's, that's really, and looking forward, as Sig just mentioned, there's strategy involved here. There's a lot of work that's gone into it, and I think that getting this out on, you know, on the public record, the city website, it really needs to be out there so people know exactly what's going on and that you guys have reached this new level.
You know, one thing through this process, got to add it, and I think Mike and Mike can attest to it, and my other Mike that's with us on 40 hours, that Tom Josen, John Martin, Scott Cast, and all the other battalion chiefs, not only did they do a process, but all the lieutenants and the fires pitched into this, and from the top down, everybody was engaged in some fashion. You know, there was negative, well, we won't deny it, but it was a work, and I think from us at the top, like you say, Ken, is we persevered, and it's like, you know, we're not going to quit on this one, because I think there's a lot of good things coming, and one of the things is, down the road, succession planning has to be a forefront here, because we don't know how the city of Oak Creek is still going to grow. You know, we got a good ideal on a few areas, but what's going to be here, and what's going to be, and what's going to be that future for the next generation that comes here and works, and I think this is a good blueprint for that.
I can tell you that on the ride-alongs that I've taken, there's been nothing but positive comments that I've heard from anyone at the fire department anytime I've been there, so I'm glad that they're being groomed to accept this as open arms as they can, but it's good that they're all buying into it at least.
Right. Again, I'm just going to keep my comments brief, because everybody had great comments. To tail on Sig, I always say, celebrate and discover Oak Creek. This is something that should be discovered and celebrated. This should be an article in The Current, The Agorn, as Chris said, the website, something like this. This is quite an accomplishment. Myself, the city administrator, and other staff, when the peer assessors were here, actually came in and interviewed us, too. This just wasn't a fire department thing. They went through the whole city to see how the communication went, how we interacted, how we accepted budget, things like that. It was very thorough. This was about continuous improvement, and it starts in our fire department, but it really shows the commitment of continuous improvement for the citizens they serve. So this just wasn't about them getting an award, this was about being cutting edge, as Sig said. The fire service has changed over the years, this is fire science, and the next generation's going to change again, and there'll be new challenges. So this just doesn't end with the award, continues on, as Mike said, it's continuous improvement, and that's good service to the citizens. So with that, I'd like to congratulate you on behalf of the entire citizens and common council of Oak Creek. Item number six, consideration of a resolution number 11847-081517 authorizing a memorandum of understanding with QuickTrip and the Milwaukee County Emergency Management. Tom?
I was approached by Milwaukee County Emergency Management, I sit on the LEPC, and our long history of emergency operations and the things, in fact, there was one a long time, Carl Stambul just retired, he's Oak Creek resident, just retired from emergency management, and actually, Brian snagged him, he's up at OE, at the WEM at the state now, doing planning processes. So we've had a good history with, on the emergency management side, and one of these things is, they asked us to come forth as, kind of as a model for the county, in knowing that we had the QuickTrips in the city, that we would form a partnership with the county, with QuickTrip and the city of Oak Creek in times of disaster, that we could, they could use, or we can use them as, they call it, essential service in QuickTrip, whether it's fuel, food, or other things that they can supply to us. In the MOU, you'll see some phone numbers, and working with the county emergency plan, this hopes to be spread throughout the county. The city of New Berlin also just recently did this, and we're kind of, kind of, what do you call it, second behind New Berlin, and looking forward to adopt this. There's a number of MOUs that occur along these, the county, state, and federal agencies to make this happen. We've all been part of these federal disaster declarations, and this can be another way of not only, if our fuel system would go down, it's a backup where they can bring in the generators themselves and supply us. One caveat to this, and talking with Steve Anderson a little bit, and they do mention about the local police potentially doing security on it, and I would think this would be a whole regional process involved, because I think the local police is going to be busy. We're either going to rely on the sheriffs, State Patrol, what other agencies, even potentially the National Guard, if there was civil unrest that could come in and assist us, and, I mean, fortunately, we have three of them in the city, so spread out over the time and the access that we'll have to this, I think this would be a good partnership.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Ken?
Chief, did the county target QuickTrip in particular, given its location outside of Milwaukee area?
I think QuickTrip actually was working with New Berlin, they approached, and they're starting to do this, you know, it's interstate across the state, and I think the, I call it a trickle-down from the state to the county, was asking to present this in force. So I think it's a good public-private partnership in doing this, and I don't think this will be our only one down the road, you know, whether you need, you know, I hate to date myself, but Carl's, you know, helped us out a lot from chainsaws and fuel and water tankers back then, but, you know, all these other agencies that, when a disaster happens, and last night at the Lions fundraiser, you know, they talked about the Lions Club even coming in to help out in times of disaster, working with the Red Cross. Or we have a current MOU with the Red Cross for their assistance.
Same question I had. Okay. No further discussion? Motion?
I'll move to approve resolution 11847-081517 authorizing a memorandum of understanding with QuickTrip and Milwaukee County Emergency Management.
Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lurik.
Aye.
Dukenia?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Item number seven is consideration of an ordinance number 2862, an ordinance to repeal and recreate section 2.05, parent one, parent A, parent one dash parent six, of the Oak Creek Municipal Code to change the designation, designated city polling places. With that, I would like to have our city clerk give us a brief explanation.
So in the past years, we have worked diligently as a city to work closely with the school district to ensure the safety of our polling locations for our children in the instances where we are in the schools. So I have met on many occasions with the former mayor and also with the school superintendent to review our security processes. We have two locations that we are still in the schools, Oak Creek East and West Middle School, and we've worked very closely together. Council, you did have a letter attached today from Dr. Culver, school superintendent, talking about some of the changes that we've made in the schools to try to ensure the safety of the children on election days. And as diligently as we've tried, with the feedback from the community that I receive, the former mayor, the school superintendent, school board, and other members, we really think that it would be prudent to move both of those locations to alternative locations. So I am proposing, and hoping that the council also agrees, that West Middle School, which is District Two, beginning, we have four elections next year in our cycle, one of them being the governor election in the fall, in November, it's going to be a very high turnout. And per the state, we need to move, we need to declare what our polling locations are at the start of an election cycle, so it would be all of 2018. And then going forward, I have met with the Oak Creek Assembly of God, and I believe that location to be most accommodating, and they are a great community partner. They are extending an invitation to use their location for a polling location, substituting West Middle School, and then same to be said about the American Legion post, which is directly across the street from current East Middle School. So those are the two locations that we're looking to change at this time. I have strong support from Dr. Culver, and I'm hoping to gain yours as well. So I'll answer any questions you might have about that.
Thank you. Steve? Catherine, is, there's no requirement that the polling places be located within the district that the people vote for?
There is not, they have to be in the municipality.
Thank you.
Within the municipality.
Catherine, as I'm reading this report, it says District Two currently voting at Oak Creek West Middle School would move to the American Legion post?
So there's a revision to that?
Okay, so that information- Okay, so that, that, that information is not accurate, correct?
Yeah, so I had tacked onto the, to the alderman that I could still grab your packet, but it's reversed. So, so yeah, East Middle School would move to the Legion.
The Legion post, okay.
And West would move to Assembly of God.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Yeah. The only other location that currently on the school district would keep would be the district building, the school office, district administration building. And there are no children in that location. So if and when the school district decides to move and move that administration office, there is potential that we could combine the districts at Oak Creek Assembly of God. That location is quite large. So that had already been discussed as well. Maybe thinking forward as to whether or not these would be good choices to move to. For District One and Two, there's the potential to reduce it down to one location. It would be a cost saving and they are open to that. So I thought I'd put that out there as well.
Any other discussion, questions? Motion?
Sorry.
Oh, you got something?
I just want to ask Rich or Greg if they actually had any feedback from their districts on constituents on the change. Ken?
Actually, the, the move to the Legion post would probably be a bit more convenient in the process. I know at East Middle School, when East first opened up, you were able to access the polling place through the gym entrance, the front gym entrance. And, and now because of security measures, I think you have to go around the back. So it's a confusing process.
And I, you know, I guess I should add too, for especially aldermen in the second and third district, part of this process that we do is we will mail a postcard to every unit, every address within your districts. So if there's multiple voters in one location, they'll receive a postcard at the address. So we'll do that and we'll do as much communication as we can. It'll be in the Acorn, it'll be, I don't, not quite sure about the Current, but we'll do social media. I will do an article in the NOW paper. I'll try to get it online as much as I can. So we really try to communicate. There will still be a case, you know, February and April and then in August, aren't as large turnout. So there will probably be where it feels like more than a year from now. But in November, when we have that really high turnout, we will still have some feedback at that election because most people come out. One of the ways that if, if you do hear or if there's concerns directly, you know, absolutely let me speak with them if I'm able to. And then early voting is an option for anyone who for some reason feels that these locations are difficult for them. They can certainly come in, early vote. And one other note on these two locations, which I have to do for all the polling locations, there's a 40-page accessibility survey that I do on locations. And these locations more than meet those needs. So that's a real positive for them.
Arden Digner, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. Being Chief Inspector for a number of years, I always appreciated when we were at Carrollville, at the express office, which was a, a polling place for Carrollville. But there was always a police representative sitting in that office to keep order. To me, that is what is missing with these polling places that are off-site and in churches. Because we all recognize this is a day when people are hired to create problems in any public place. And to have these polling places moved into rarefied atmosphere, we'll say, or a very mild atmosphere of churches without protection for anyone there. I would say that we have to look at providing police protection at every one of these polling places now. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Seeing no further discussion? Motion?
I've got, oh, sorry, Mike?
I've been part of two moves in the last six years. My constituents used to vote at Carrollton Elementary School. That was changed. We went to Deerfield. That was changed. Security, actually it was disabled access at Carrollton, I believe, and then security at Deerfield because of the school situation. Both transitions, now, now my constituents actually was moved out of my district to National Guard Armory. And both transitions were smooth. It was handled well by the city clerk's office. And I think I got two phone calls on both transitions. The two phone calls involved just clarifications as where they were going to vote twice. And so you guys will be happy with the transition.
I, I will say for District Four voters, they do get the most resilient badge of honor because they have been moved twice.
Seeing no more? Motion?
We'll move to approve ordinance 26, 2862, excuse me, an ordinance to repeal and recreate section 2.05 sub one, sub A, sub one dash six of the Oak Creek Municipal Code to change the designated city polling places.
Gail's second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukeniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Item eight is consideration of a motion to concur with the mayor appointments. Celebrations is Melanie Linseth and Library Board Karen Umms. While you're thinking it over, I would like to thank these. These are both returning members of their respective commissions. They've been longtime volunteers and I'd like to thank them for their service and stepping up once again. There's no issues? Motion?
We'll move to concur with the mayor's appointments as listed.
Gail's second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukeniak.
Aye.
Item nine, our vendor summary report in the amount of $1,752,499.62. Please take a look. And if you have questions or comments, direct them to our financial director, Bridget. Bridget, just a lot of these are contract payoffs, correct? That raise the amount? Preparo and?
Correct. We have IKEA Way Street Construction and multiple contract payments for Lake Vista Park, which is ramping up work as the weather has been nice. So we're paying some pretty hefty bills.
Any questions? Comments? Motion?
We'll move to approve vendor summary report in amount of $1,752,499.62.
Gail's second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukeniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 10 under Community Development is consideration of a resolution approving an affidavit for the correction submitted by HSA Commercial for the property at 7901 South Sixth Street. Doug?
Evening. So HSA Commercial on behalf of Freighter requesting approval of this affidavit of correction. And essentially what that means is that when the original CSM was adopted and approved by this common council, there was a restriction regarding access to Drexel Avenue. And as we've progressed with the plans, the, the intent always was to have that available for emergency access and for deliveries, but not for the public. This affidavit of correction changes the language on that CSM. So now it removes that restriction and replaces it with a language that permits emergency access to the parcel.
Okay, motion?
Oracle move that the council adopt resolution number 11843-081517 approving an affidavit of correction submitted by HSA Commercial for the property at 7901 South Sixth Street.
Kirkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukeniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Item 11 is consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map for Richard Beck Hinkle Corporation for the property at 500 West Marquette. Doug, is that you again?
Sure. The CSM would re-divide the property at, I remember, West Marquette into two lots, both of which would be of conforming size and dimension. And each also have existing buildings on them. Note that there are no plans, no immediate plans for future development on either lot. But when they do develop, each of them would have to comply with the minimum lot standards with respect to open space, what have you, things of that nature. The Plan Commission did review the proposed CSM. They've recommended their approval. One thing that should be noted is that there is an active special assessment that's being paid via the tax roll as identified by the finance department, but that should not affect the permitting. These properties are not part of a district.
Is it a, is it a?
Never mind.
It's not my district.
You're right. The agenda has fourth and the, yeah, the resolution is first. Thank you.
Yeah. I don't have any west addresses in my district.
Yeah. Any other discussion, comments? Roll call.
You gotta make a motion.
Motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion?
Kirkowski will make a motion to council adopt resolution number 11846-081517 approving a certified survey map for Richard Beck Hinkle Corporation for the property at 500 West Marquette Avenue.
Oracle second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukeniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Item 12 is consideration of an ordinance adopting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for the properties at 7581 7705, 7725, 7751, 7765, 7781, 7811, 7831, and 7869 South 13th Street. Doug, you pulling that one up?
Sure. So back in 2006, the larger properties that you see on your screen here are rezoned to off B3, which is office and professional business. And at that time, there was in the company proposal to amend the comprehensive plan, which was adopted as a single-family residential to a, a land use category which more befitted the, the location of those properties. And I think the proposal was for planned mixed use. For whatever reason, there were some, some changes in, within the, the city that we never followed through on that. But now as things have kind of accelerated with the Drexel interchange and the properties surrounding that, there is renewed development interest in those properties and some of the surrounding properties. And so as a prelude to future possible rezonings of these properties, the first step would be to change the future land use map for this property and others in the vicinity, again, to reflect a more, a more, more appropriate land use for that, recognizing that probably single-family residential is not the highest, best use for this property, nor is it entirely appropriate for that. So the proposal is to change that to planned mixed use, which is consistent with what's happening on the other side of the interchange, allows for a range of, or mix of uses, as the name implies, be it commercial, it could be offices, could be residential. And again, important to note that this in and of itself does not rezon the property. That would come at a later date when the owners of the property wanted to bring forward their plans, which has not happened to date. So with that in mind, the Plan Commission did hold a public hearing at their last meeting. And with the results of that public hearing, they have recommended, actually they have adopted a resolution amending the comprehensive plan and have recommended to the common council that they also adopt a resolution, or actually in this case, an ordinance, which changes that comprehensive plan to planned mixed use.
Thank you very much, Doug. Any comments, questions? Steve?
My night, isn't it?
It's your night. It's always your night.
Okay. Sorry, it's Little League season, it's World Series. Okay. I have, in the past, just for benefit of fellow council members, the residents that live on the east side of 13th across the street have expressed interest as to what might go in on the west side of the street. So I would suspect that whatever eventually goes there, you're gonna, you'll have the residents across the street be very interested in making sure that their view out the front window is not entirely 20 acres of asphalt. So just thought I'd share that with you because they are keeping an eye on that. Okay.
Anyone else? Just to kind of recap, we did have a, a good, pretty, pretty good conversation about this at the Plan Commission. The residents did come in along 13th Street and express their point of view. This is a change to the comprehensive plan. As Doug said, the zoning's actually in place. So they, they were a little bit confused as to the comprehensive plan versus what zoning is. So it's, it's really kind of there. It's just really cleanup work on our end. But again, they will be involved. I like to think that we do keep our neighbors involved. They may not always like every decision that comes down, but for the most part, we do engage them. We do have ordinances that inform them of something that's going to affect them. Doug, any comments you'd like to make?
No, I think that there was a general acceptance. And in fact, and some of the residents themselves alluded to it, that it's a changing, it's a transitioning area. And that probably a single-family, again, while it may have made sense back in 2002, probably isn't when the Drexel interchange wasn't even mapped. Likely does not make sense today and planned mixed use is a more appropriate land use.
Thank you. Seeing no further conversation? Motion?
Kirkowski will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2863, an ordinance adopting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for the properties at 7581 7705, 7725, 7751, 7765, 7781, 7811, 7831, and 7869 South 13th Street.
Oracle second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Dukeniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item 13, consider a resolution approving an agreement to modify the Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, Restrictions, and Easements for Drexel Town Square. Andrew or Doug?
It's with an assist from City Attorney Carl's. As the, as the memo states, the, the council had already, the council had already modified these covenants in, in early June. Unfortunately, the lender for the, the project had a different idea of what some of the changes needed to be for the covenants. So really, we're just here again trying to satisfy some additional suggestions that were made by the lender of the project in, in regards to these covenants. We, we are still plugging away at this, at this project, the waters. And I, I just want to say that, and maybe a, a general message, and I know much to her chagrin, but I have to give City Attorney Carl's a lot of credit for hanging in there on this one. It's a lot of rigmarole. And, you know, we have a lot of fun negotiating these deals, finding what's in the best interest of the residents while also growing our tax base. And then we get to look at the site plans and make those really good in quality. And then we get the agreement or the development approved at the council level. And then there's a lot of, I guess, rigmarole, for lack of a better word, that goes along with administering these contracts. And, and I just have to say that, that's not as fun as negotiating the deal and announcing this new stuff to the community. So thank you, City Attorney Carl's for, for your work on this. This is, this is just one, another hiccup and a little bit of a journey on this one in terms of the, the legalities involved. But these legalities and, and financial considerations of our partners, you know, in turn are, are very important to us too, to, to, you know, clear these hurdles. So with that, you know, be happy to entertain any questions. But it's kind of a routine, or I guess, a, you know, to clean up item again with the modifications and covenants, for the covenants.
We do have one resident that would like to speak on it. Arden? Do have one resident that would like to speak on it. Arden?
Arden Digner, 8540 South Pennsylvania, I have a long story to talk about.
Three minutes, Arden.
With this cross-parking easement, property will be the exclusive use of the owner of the property, its employees, residents, contractors, guests, and invitees, and no other party shall have any right to use such parking areas. This is what happened to me a dozen years ago at Wildwood, around the corner of Drexel and 10th. There were plenty of parking spots available. I parked and visited some of the housing. When I, after an hour or so, after dark, I looked for my car, it was gone. I called my friends, "Come on over here, help me find my car." Finally, well, some of the residents came out when they saw lights and my friends trying to locate my automobile. Oh, I think we saw it towed away. Then I contacted the police department, and they said that there is no visitor parking in that area. No visitor parking, and to this day, there's no visitor parking. And if you park in that area, you will be, it cost me hundreds of dollars to retrieve my car. Now, why does the city of Oak Creek allow these places to... The only place I could park, they said, was on the street, right on Drexel Avenue, right on 10th Avenue. This is the most stupid arrangement I had ever run across, and here I see the same thing happening. This is an atrocious atrocity. Visitor parking has to be allowed. Do you understand? It costs me hundreds of dollars to retrieve my car, in city, by the police department, and all they said that they, the man who just had to call the police and to call my car away, if, if residents of this community. This is not the way a community has to treat residents visiting.
Thank you for your comments and sorry for your inconvenience. Any questions, comments?
Curious how it changed, how it changed from the original one. I mean, it seems like by the agreement, everybody but overflow parking can go there, correct? It does say visitors are allowed.
If I, if I could shed a little bit of light on that, uh, the waters, the, the bulk of their, their resident parking, as a matter of fact, all of the resident parking, uh, will be accomplished underground. And the spaces that are there for visitor parking, and there, there's not a lot of them, because given the nature of the, of the establishment, are within kind of courtyard, uh, and, you know, to the extent that all or a majority of the parking lots within Drexel Town Square, with a few exceptions, do have the shared parking covenant, given these kind of specific nature of what happens at the waters, it really did not add to essentially, uh, the, the volume of parking, nor it was compatible with the types of users that, uh, would have potentially parked there. So this was something that, uh, one of us, Drexel, uh, as well as the city, are comfortable in, in making that amendment.
They're just trying to prevent overflow parking from events that we have here, correct?
Potentially.
To leave room for visitors to the residents of the waters.
Correct.
Hopefully we'll fix the problem.
Anyways, any other comments, questions? Motion?
Oracle move that the council adopt resolution number 11849-081517 approving an agreement to modify Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, Restrictions, and Easements for Drexel Town Square.
Kirkowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Before we move on to engineering, I'd like to take us back to item four for a council proclamation to recognize Benjamin Krasinski for receiving his Eagle Scout Award. Benjamin, would you like to come up? Benjamin, first, we're gonna have our city clerk read the proclamation to you before we present it to you, and then we'll give you the floor for a little bit.
Council proclamation number 17-11, congratulations to Benjamin Walter Krasinski for receiving, receiving the Eagle Scout Award. Whereas the conferring of an Eagle Scout is one of the highest awards that can be bestowed upon a Boy Scout, and whereas such award is an earned award in that the recipient must perform and successfully complete and pass the rigid requirements exacted to achieve an Eagle Scout Award. And whereas less than 4% of all scouts actually achieve this goal, and whereas at a court of honor to be held at Grace Lutheran Church on August 27th, 2017, at 2:00 PM, an Eagle Award will be conferred upon Benjamin Krasinski. And whereas, as his Eagle project, Benjamin chose to reconstruct a sandbox area at Grace Lutheran Early Childhood Center in Oak Creek. Whereas, as part of this project, Benjamin reconstructed the rotted wood sandbox structure, replaced the existing sand, designated a tight-fitting cover to fit on top of the sandbox, and built a shade canopy over the entire area, providing shade to children while at play. Whereas Benjamin organized and coordinated the efforts of 30 volunteers to reconstruct the shaded sandbox area, putting in a total of over 303 man-hours of work, thereby providing the children at Grace Lutheran Early Childhood Center a safe and fun, fun place to play. And whereas the Oak Creek Common Council wishes to recognize this noteworthy achievement of Benjamin Krasinski, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the common council of the city of Oak Creek hereby extend their congratulations to Eagle Scout Benjamin Krasinski for having an Eagle Scout Award conferred upon him by the Boy Scouts of America. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and the city clerk be and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Benjamin Krasinski dated this 15th day of August 2017. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ben. It's, uh, quite a feat. I know it takes many years to get up to the rank of Eagle Scout, uh, it's an accomplishment you should be very proud of, your family should be very proud of you, and your community is very proud of you. Uh, I'd like to see more of you coming through. Um, they always ask me, "What's the future of Oak Creek look like?" I always say, "Look to our kids," and you're a great example of it. Um, I do apologize, I am double-booked on the 27th, I will not be able to make it, but Alderman Kirkowski has agreed to, to go and, and fill in for me, so that'll just be a, a great ceremony for you. Comments? What do you have to say?
Thank you all for the wonderful letter, and I also want to thank Mr. Toman for the donation that he helped me get for the Eagle project.
Our finance director would like to say a few words.
So I know that we have four city employees whose children go to Grace, so thank you from myself, as well as the three others, for the work that you did. I'm cleaning sand out of my kids' shoes every day. But it really was great, and it was a much-needed improvement, so thank you.
Ben, what I'd like to do is come around, give you a handshake, and present you your award. Um, any other comments for Ben, anything? If not, motion please.
Kirkowski will make a motion to approve council proclamation number 17-11, congratulations to Benjamin Walter Krasinski for receiving the Eagle Scout Award.
Oracle second. Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
And just one last comment, I was hoping to have Ben here to do the pledge of allegiance and lead us in the pledge. Uh, he was committed to football and, and could not get out of practice. Um, they got games coming up, but Ben, you're welcome to come back anytime and, and lead us in the pledge. Uh, engineering, item 14, uh, consideration of a resolution granting a permanent easement to We Energies for Services at the Park Pavilion at Lake Vista, 9180 South Fifth Avenue. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a, uh, uh, I guess, kind of a common request of, of We Energies as they put in, uh, uh, new, uh, facilities, uh, to accommodate development. This is for, uh, this is one easement, it will contain both the natural gas, um, line and the electric line, uh, both buried facilities to the, uh, uh, Park Pavilion, that is currently under construction at Lake Vista Park. Uh, basically, they are, uh, connecting to their existing infrastructure in the, in the area of Fifth and American, paralleling, uh, the, the newer, uh, Lake Vista Drive, uh, towards the east and then south to the pavilion. And, uh, is there policy to, uh, require, as these are, uh, services are requested, that, that they be, uh, contained within easements? Uh, basically, that does preserve, uh, their ability to be compensated if the facilities need to be relocated, uh, in the future.
Right. Questions, comments? Mike?
How's it going down there, Mike? Can you give us a little update?
Yes, it, it's going, um, okay, and, and Bridget alluded to it on the vendor summary report. The, uh, work is ramping up, uh, finally stopped raining, uh, so we've had a nice stretch of weather, and so yes, uh, the, the work is, uh, moving along. Um, we are approximately 30% complete on the, uh, just based on the, the payments that, that we did, uh, that were approved here tonight, about 30% on the architectural structures. Um, I, I would say physically, we're probably, uh, closer to 40 or 45%, so, um, we'll see that in the next payment. Um, and about 45% on the, on the site work, uh, which is the Edgerton contract, that's the, uh, the larger of the two contracts. So lots of earthwork, um, uh, the paving, the pathways. Um, I would say that if, if you were to visit the site today, you would, uh, see that, uh, much of the grading is completed, it's actually even been top-soiled and graded and seeded. Um, so it's actually starting to turn green out there, but you would also see just about every other phase of the, of the project still, um, in varying stages of completion, so. Virtually all of the infrastructure is to some degree complete, uh, nothing in, in its entirety yet at this point, uh, but they are making good progress, and, uh, we expect, um, the, uh, upland structures to be complete, other than the pavilion itself, um, by, um, late October. And then some of the, the work that's happening on the bluff, uh, on the bluff face, uh, probably complete sometime December. And the pavilion, uh, looks to be, uh, working, uh, getting enclosed, working through the winter, uh, completing it in early spring.
That includes the pavilion next spring?
Yes.
Okay. Give me a call next time you go down here, I'd like to take a little tour.
Sure.
If any other Aldermen would like to come along.
Interestingly, we had, uh, representatives from the Wisconsin DNR here last week, Wednesday, Tuesday. It, it was led, actually what it was, it was about brownfields, both here at Delphi, at the Delphi site, and also at the lake, and the DNR toured. Uh, they provided us a lot of grants and partnership along with the EPA, and members of our staff was there, Melissa Carls was with us, it was led by our former city attorney Larry Haskins. City Administrator was with us, Doug Seymour was there, uh, Mike, you were down there, Ken, you were with us.
Briefly?
Yep, you really can go down there and really get a flavor of what you're gonna see. As Mike said, it's in various stages of completion, but, uh, you can very much see the plan. And when you get down there, you'll be amazed at the size of that landmass. I don't think anybody really realized just how much land was down there and closed off from the general public, so, um, I encourage you to get out there and take a look.
Opening spring of next year?
That's correct. Anything else? Motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt resolution number 11845, granting a permanent easement to We Energies for Services at the Park Pavilion at Lake Vista Park, 9180 South Fifth Ave... Is that the correct address? That's the Fifth Avenue address?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Gale will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 15, consideration of a resolution approving the final payment to AW Oaks and Sons for the South Sixth Soil Removal and Relocation Project, Second District. You again, Mike?
This is the, um, uh, this was the project to, uh, basically haul that large stockpile of soil that was, uh, immediately to the west of us, outside the, uh, across the street from the library, uh, main entrance. Uh, that took place, uh, late summer into early fall of last year. And, um, basically, um, that, that was taken down to the lakefront stockpile and, and, and seeded, and then, of course, this site is, is now, uh, looking to be Emerald Meadow, or, uh, Emerald Row, uh, Phase Two. Um, uh, that was all seeded and, and has, uh, is, is, and is vegetated, so. Basically, um, we had a little bit of delay closing the, the project out, is, is, uh, we had a little punchless work done on the seeding on the lakefront site, uh, that has, uh, germinated and has, uh, filled in adequately, so we feel comfortable in recommending that this project be closed out and the final payment be made. In, in the end, we were about 7% over the awarded, uh, contract amount, and that was, you know, purely on the as-built quantities of, of soil that was, uh, hauled to the lakefront, that was, uh, monitored closely with, uh, with, uh, haul tickets. Uh, so that accounts for the, uh, that 7% overage.
Right. Questions, comments? Motion?
Oracle move that the council adopt resolution number 11844-081517 approving final payment to AW Oaks and Sons for the South Sixth Street Soil Removal and Relocation Project 14035.
Kirkowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Oh, pardon me, Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman. Gale.
Aye.
Item 16, consideration of a resolution approving the Glen Crossing additions development agreement.
This is the, uh, graphic that you have before you, this is, uh, uh, the next two phases of the Glen Crossing, um, residential subdivision development off of, uh, 13th Street, uh, in the vicinity of, uh, middle school. This is the agreement that, uh, outlines and, and, uh, addresses all of the public infrastructure that the, that the developer will be required to, uh, design and construct, uh, in, in order to, uh, uh, complete the residential development. The understanding is that, that they are going to proceed with, uh, part one of, of this, uh, of these two phases here immediately, which encompasses 23, uh, residential lots. Of course, it, uh, takes care of, uh, the design and construction of the roads, sidewalk, street lighting, uh, and, uh, stormwater. The detention, uh, stormwater management, the detention pond, uh, that was constructed with the very initial phase of Glen Crossings, and that on the graphic is up on the, uh, upper right-hand corner, the, or the northeast corner of the, of the map. Um, and, uh, kind of, uh, you know, a, a good thing to, to, uh, have some residential development here in the city, it's been quite a while with that residential downturn that we, uh, uh, that we experienced, and so this will address, um, a, a shrinking inventory of residential lots.
Questions? Greg?
Um, just two quick questions. Number one, do they have a timeframe when they might start the work?
Their initial plan was to get going this year yet.
Okay.
And I don't know if that is still their plan.
Okay. And then the second one, I believe that when I last heard from them, they were in discussions with the resident to the far south on 13th Street to do a temporary access road, do you know if that went through, or where, how they're gonna get in there to do the work?
Um, that's a good question. Um, that's a good question. I don't have an answer for you on that, but I can, I can find that, find that out, and I will get in contact with you on that.
Great, thanks.
What else?
Well, great to see some single-family.
Agreed. Agreed.
Talked about this at, at length at the Plan Commission as well, so we had a pretty good turnout.
The, probably worth mentioning is, is that the development agreement has been, the language has been altered somewhat from previous development agreements, and that is, of course, it, it addresses the paving of the road, which we went through a rather lengthy and somewhat painful process on, on some of those developments, some of those last developments. So, that last one being wrapped up about three months ago, and Melissa's very happy. And so is Bridget. I think we all are. But at any rate, so when they pave the roads, they are paving them solid, all the way from start to finish. And feel that that will address this issue.
Good. Anyone else? Motion?
Lorick moves that the council adopt resolution number one one eight four eight dash zero eight one five one seven, approving Glen Crossing addition development agreement.
Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Leads us to the Licensing Committee. I'd like to turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you. The License Committee met on August second, two thousand and seventeen, minutes are attached. Recommendations are as follows. Item seventeen, Kirkowski makes a motion to deny an operator's license to McKenna L. Criski, twenty-five thirty-three West St. John's Way, Oak Creek, for falsification by omission.
Dukenyak second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Eighteen, Kirkowski make a motion to deny an operator's license to Hannah M. Stein, seventy-five thirty-five East Wind Lake Road, Wind Lake, for falsification by omission.
Dukenyak second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Following items were received after the License Committee met. Tentative recommendations are as follows. Item nineteen, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant an operator's license to the three individuals listed on the agenda, favorable background reports were received.
Dukenyak second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item twenty, Kirkowski make a motion to grant a two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen regular Class B combination alcohol license to Michael D. Ridgeway, Marcus Cinemas of Wisconsin LLC, DBA South Shore Cinemas, seven two six one, South Thirteenth Street, with issuance subject to surrender of current reserved Class B combination license, and to authorize the refund of the ten thousand dollar one-time reserve insurance issuance fee.
Dukenyak second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
And finally, item number twenty-one, Kirkowski make a motion to grant a two thousand and seventeen transient merchant license to Joseph Bontempo, agent for Spectrum, five eight one two, South Twenty-first Street, Racine, Wisconsin, selling cable, phone, and internet services, and to the following salesperson, Jasmine Seymour, one zero three seven, Kentucky Street, Racine, favorable background reports received.
And Dukenyak second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item twenty-two, consider a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section nineteen point eighty-five one E, to discuss the city's negotiating position with the Oak Creek Professional Police Officers Association. On the council, President Gale?
Thank you, Mayor. Gale will move to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub C, and E, to discuss the city negotiating position with the Oak Creek Professional Police Officers Association. Sub B, sorry.
Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
We will now convene into closed session.
Dukenyak. Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
We will take no action. Item twenty-four, adjournment.
Kerkowski will make a motion to adjourn.
Oracle second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Great, like to thank everybody who's streaming us live or tuning in one way or the other. I encourage you, get out there, discover, and celebrate Oak Creek. Thank you very much.